I'm Suzanne Kavick. I'm president of the League of Women Voters of Newcastle. I want to welcome everybody for our Candidates Night tonight. I want to also welcome our candidates. Thank you so much for coming. This Candidates Night is for the CCSD School Board. The Library Board election is uncontested, so you will not be meeting that candidate tonight. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan grassroots political organization of women and men. This means that the League doesn't support or oppose one candidate or political party over another. We're dedicated to active and informed participation of citizens in government at all levels. The League works to educate voters, increase understanding and debate on major policy issues, and influence policy through education and advocacy. The League can take positions on policies, but not on candidates or parties. I do want to let you know about a couple upcoming League events. We are selling our reusable tote bags. They're $10. We have plenty of them in the back if you'd like to get them. Or you can order them online at our website, which is lvvnewcastle.org. We have a book discussion group, League Reads. We will be having our third discussion in July, so please check our website and Facebook page for upcoming details. On August 6th, which is a Tuesday evening, we'll be holding a Sparkle event at the Kittle House. The Sparkle for a Cause is sponsored by the Amy Crabtree Foundation in honor of the late Amy Crabtree to support local nonprofits. And this is lovely because you just get to go and eat and enjoy yourself, and as long as you identify yourself as saying, "I'm here for the League's Sparkle," the Kittle House will donate 30% of your bill, of the guest bill, to the League. So it's really quite nice. We do have materials on the League in the back at the table where you found all those delicious cookies and cheese and coffee. And you can find information about your candidates here on our online Voters Guide. Additionally, I want to point out that there are two propositions on the ballot this year for your consideration. You can read about those again on the online Voters Guide. And remember, when you do vote on May 21st, and I encourage you all to vote on May 21st, for your school and library boards, please turn your ballot over so you can consider those propositions. Also, remember, New York State has their primary election on June 25th. Now, this evening's proceedings are being taped by Newcastle Community Media Center. They're being livestreamed, and they're available on your local cable station. I want to remind you that personal recording of any kind is prohibited, so no phones, iPads, et cetera, and the rebroadcast of any segment of this forum is also prohibited. Finally, I'd like to thank our Voter Service Chair, Mary Kirsch, for arranging this evening, and Jennifer Mavis-Flagg for her role in developing the online Voters Guide, our timekeepers for tonight, our League members, Mary Kirsch, and our student intern, Sarah Kugelmas. Our moderator this evening is Paul Schwartz, who will go over the ground rules for tonight's forum. A member of the League of Women Voters, Paul trains and coordinates moderators for Westchester County, so he is very, very good at this. He's a retired teacher of English and public speaking. Since retiring, he's devoted his time to civic and community organizations focusing on issues of aging, affordable housing, disabilities, and intergenerational programming. Mr. Schwartz is president of the Board of the Meals on Wheels of White Plains, and he's also president of the Board of Trustees of the White Plains Public Library. I will now turn the podium and this Candidates Forum over to Paul Schwartz.
Yeah, and I should say that Suzanne, in addition to being president of the local League, has become one of our moderators and is doing one this season as well. Thank you all for coming out on such a lousy, lousy evening. I was going to say, they don't usually have the School Board elections in February. Okay, maybe we'll be back to May in a couple of days. My pleasure, and as Suzanne said, I come here tonight from White Plains. That's the League's policy, always to have a moderator who does not have any dog in the fight, or, you know, I am not a voter in the district. You're here, and those of you who are watching at home, I don't know where the cameras are. It's one of those things with those new invisible cameras all around the room. We have those in White Plains, too, to listen to the candidates' views on issues. So I will ask you to refrain from applause for various reasons. Hold all of your applause until the end of the program. She already mentioned about cable and Fios and cable, and it will be rebroadcast until Election Day. Is it also going to be on the League's website? Sometimes it is. Okay, I'll leave that. All right. And you said no excerpts. Okay, and my phone is on airplane. How about yours? Make sure that there are no dings and rings, all right? We are hearing, as you know, from candidates for the Chappaqua School Board, ground rules are, first, each candidate, and they've drawn lots and are sitting in the order in which they'll do their opening statement, two-minute opening statement. Following that, I have a question prepared by the League, and for that question and all the others, each will have a minute and a half to respond. And then questions from the audience. Microphone there. Questioners, the rules are, must be at least 16 years of age. Come up to the microphone. It's got to be a question, all right? Not a statement. It's got to be less than a minute. Must not be of a personal nature. May be directed to one or more or all. The best questions are for all, but if it is a question to one, everybody else has a turn to speak, reply, comment, or speak on any topic of his or her choice. The order of answering will rotate as we go along, and each will have, again, a minute and a half to respond to each question. At the conclusion, the candidates will each have a minute for a closing in the reverse order of the openings. Thanks again to the timekeepers. Their signs will indicate for the opening, one minute, 30 seconds, and stop. I guess for the questions as well, not for the one-minute closing, all right? In alphabetical order, your candidates tonight are Hillary Grasso, Leah Heiss, Kaylee Wong, Warren Messner, Jeffrey Mester. They're sitting in this order.
Almost.
Warren and I are switched.
Are you going to confuse me?
From alphabetical.
You said alphabetical. Oh. Okay.
We're almost alphabetical.
Okay, okay. I think I listed it in alphabetical order, but, okay. But this is the order in which they're going to do their openings, and so we are ready to begin. Okay? Timekeepers are ready? Go right ahead.
Hi, I'm Hillary Grasso. I'm a Grafflin mom, an education attorney, and an adjunct professor of education law and special education law at St. John's University Law School. After a very brief stint in corporate law, my whole career has been dedicated to public schools and making them better for all students. I have represented public school districts, both urban and suburban, helped open charter schools, and have most recently represented parents and students here in Westchester. I am closing my practice at the end of this school year and want to use my experience to give back to the community we love. I love schools. I always have, even as a student. I thought I would be a high school English and theater teacher, but work I did in college led me to pursue education law and policy instead. My favorite part of my work has always been being in schools. My husband laughs at me because I'm incapable of thinking about the year in terms other than as the academic calendar. I love being at Grafflin as one of the ASE co-chairs and watching the kids finish their days and prepare for their afternoons. I also, through my work, know a lot about schools and school districts and how they work. I grew up in Lower Westchester, and when we moved up here from Brooklyn 12 years ago, I was more than a bit persnickety about which school districts I was willing to consider. So I did my research, and there were a few things about Chappaqua beyond the stellar reputation that really stood out to me. I love the fact that there was a robust arts curriculum at Greeley, as well as an array of opportunities for advanced study at the high school level. So you may ask, if I think the district is already doing well, why am I running for School Board? Two reasons. First, we can always do better. In talking to parents, I think there are some areas we could use improvement, one of which is the balance of inclusion and differentiation of instruction, two ideals that I feel very strongly about as a parent and as a special education lawyer. I've heard concerns and criticism from parents at every level about balancing of these goals, and I think there are ways to do better. I look forward to answering your questions.
All right. Let's my timer start.
Yeah.
But my green light went out.
We can hear you.
You can hear me. Excellent, okay. Good evening. My name is Leah Heiss, and...
There you go. Start the timer.
Now you can hear me better. All right. I have been a resident at Chappaqua for nearly eight years, and my four children attend Bell Middle School and Royenbrook School. I have a strong STEM background. I studied science, engineering, and math in college and graduate school, and I was employed as a software engineer in academic, startup, and corporate environments before becoming a stay-at-home parent and a community volunteer. I am active in both my kids' schools' PTAs. I'm a member of the district's Special Ed Parent Advisory Committee, and I am a Cub Scout and a Girl Scout leader. Many of you may recognize me from school functions, our kids' sports teams, scouts, or from two years ago when I last ran for School Board. The children in our community are diverse, with a wide range of strengths and weaknesses. Our school district needs to do a better job of supporting our varied learners. We have excellent facilities and educators, and our money is well-managed. It's time to take another look at why some of our students are not meeting their potential. Our schools must continue to evolve their curriculums to include teaching strategies that serve all types of learners and appropriately challenge every child. If elected to the School Board, I will make thoughtful, well-reasoned decisions based on facts and data, not emotions. I will ask the hard and uncomfortable questions. Any of you that know me know that that is true. And I will work collaboratively with the other board members to lead our school district towards meaningful improvements in the quality of student life and instruction. Thank you for your consideration.
My name is Kaylee Wong. Tonight, I come to share just a little bit about me. I am an educator and teacher by training, but it is not these titles that make me able. I put my confidence in the experiences and insights I have gained in living life as a mother of three, three little boys, a wife, a friend, neighbor, and community member. The many hats that I wear each day as an ordinary person will enable me to be an effective board member. My desire is to serve the community by extending my passion for excellence in education in pursuit of becoming lifelong learners. My commitment to serve as a public servant is to listen, collaborate, represent, and be a bridge of communication to the people and for the people. I am dedicated to represent the diversity of this community in the various facets of life. We all chose to be here and stay here because we care, we recognize the importance of great education. We aspire and yearn for knowledge and creativity. We seek independent thinking. I am devoted to be attentive and be thoughtful, to listen and to engage, to be a sagacious citizen to the tasks at hand and the great endeavors that lie before us. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring and arranging this Candidates Night, everyone in the audience for participating, and my fellow candidates. It's been said that one definition of a volunteer is someone who didn't understand the question. This is my fifth time running for the Board of Ed, and I know what it takes. Any candidate that receives enough votes can be a member of the Board of Education, but to be an effective member of the Board requires much, much more. It's not simply about being smart or having the time. It's not about having a theoretical knowledge. For the past 12 years, I've worked tirelessly on behalf of the members of this community. The world demands a person with passion for education, requires a person with an extensive and detailed knowledge of the district, a complete understanding of the budget and structural budget issues the district faces, a person who can make practical and reasoned decisions, a person who is flexible and can build consensus, a person who can balance competing community interests, and a person with vision and conviction. It's recognized we have a fiduciary obligation to all the taxpayers, not just the ones with students in the schools, and not just subgroups of students with taxpayers. The district is in a very good place. The new superintendent has hired an outstanding administrative team. They are focused on the right things right now, the education program and how it fits into a fiscally responsible budget. They are focused on communication and transparency, but the number one priority is the safety and well-being of our students. It's always been, and it always will be. Going forward, I pledge to continue to offer fiscally responsible budgets. For the eighth year in a row, we will not exceed our tax cap. I will continue to support openness and transparency. I will continue to support our district being an inclusion district. I will continue to advocate the opening of all AP classes for those who wish to enroll. I will continue as a member of the Long-Term Security Task Force and as a board member to focus on security and the well-being of our students. Finally, a school board is an advisory board. It's not an operating board. The basis for sound advice is knowledge and experience. As a candidate, I offer the community my experience, knowledge, district expertise, and time. I offer consensus-building skills, concrete suggestions, and practical solutions. I offer common sense with an uncommon commitment. Experience matters.
Matters. Okay. Thank you.
So before, so I just want to make a statement of disclosure. I'm on the current School Board, so anything I say this evening, I could say this for Jeffrey also, anything we say is our personal opinion. It's not on behalf, I'm not speaking on behalf of the Board of Education or the district.
Warren speaks for me when he says that. I speak for myself.
No, but I just want to know that's my, that's my, these are my thoughts.
That's fine. Okay? Please.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for holding this meet the Candidates Night. Thank you to my fellow candidates for being here and to my family for their support. Most of all, I'd like to thank the community, a community that supports education, a community that supports public education. I'm Warren Messner. I've lived in Chappaqua for the past 17 years with my wife, and we have 21-year-old triplets. I am currently the president of the Chappaqua Central School of Education. I ran for and won an open seat on the Board of Education six years ago, and now completing my second three-year term on the Board. I would like the community's support and their vote to allow me to continue supporting them. Education has always been a part of my life. My mom was a teacher for 35 years, and most of my family have been teachers in public education. In fact, my cousin worked in Chappaqua years ago. This is a way for me to give back to my community. As a member of the Board of Education, as a fiduciary of the district, I get to help provide resources and directions that our administrators, faculty, and staff use to develop programs for the children of our district while being cognizant of the funds provided by the property owners of our community. Being on the Board, I have spent hundreds of hours working with administrators, faculty, and staff, as well as town of Newcastle personnel, community members, and various committees that each board member is assigned. I am currently a chair of the Audit Committee, liaison to Chappaqua for Youth, and a member of the Policy Committee. I have been liaison to our scholarship fund and also have been on the Wellness Committee. During the past six years, I have been working as a fiscal conservative to help keep taxes low while maintaining the highest educational standards of our programs. In the past six years I've been on the Board, the average tax increase is 1.6%, and this year we have a tax levy increase of 0.94% for the voters of our district. Last year, we successfully negotiated contracts with our four unions. I have been active in mandated relief, which directly relates to lowering costs of managing the district. We are a progressive school district in that we continually look to the best of our educational programs and students to allow them to succeed to the best of their abilities. I look forward to serving the community as a Board of Education member and ask you for your support on May 21st. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. You've heard all five openings. The first question, and we'll start with you, and we'll move along, right? Yeah. That's Heissel. That's the first question.
Oh. I start? No, I thought Hillary started. She starts for opening. Okay.
Yeah, so you'll be first on that question.
Got it.
And so on. We'll circle around, okay? And then the closings in reverse of the opening. And while they're answering this one, you must have come with your question in mind, but if not, think about it, because after this one, it's going to be up to you. So this is the question that's been posed by your local League for all of you. Do you think that our school district should do more to identify, support, and challenge gifted and II, that is, twice exceptional, learners? And if so, what would you propose, and to what extent can the School Board influence this?
That's a great question. Thank you. I'm glad to go first.
Okay. Go ahead.
Point of information? The answers are one minute?
90 seconds.
90 seconds.
Thanks. We absolutely need to start identifying our gifted learners. The parents of our gifted learners know who the gifted learners are, and the schools pretend like they don't have gifted learners. Gifted education is special education. It's not just high-achieving kids who can be put into any classroom and do wonderfully. They're different. They are fundamentally different. Their brains are wired entirely differently from your average kids. They need a special education. This is going to be difficult in our community. I suspect we can all extrapolate why our district doesn't have a gifted education program right now. There is a strong focus in our district on achievement. Gifted education is not oriented towards achievement. It is designed to provide these special education children with supports that they need to achieve their potentials. At the elementary school level, it would be pretty simple to start breaking out kids into groups for math instruction. Reading is already sort of metered to the children's abilities, and that can happen in a large classroom situation. Differentiation for that is easy. Math becomes the most obvious subject to begin breaking kids into groups by abilities. It's easier for the teacher to teach to a group of children that are all of a similar ability. And I got my stop sign.
Okay.
So as I stated before, I'm an educator. I'm a literacy specialist, and I used to teach gifted and talented children in the city when I was a classroom teacher. All to say that to assess gifted children is, it's a bit of a tricky thing. Sometimes it's about parents who are very vocal about saying that their children are gifted. Sometimes it's about resources, having the resources to go get your kids tested because the district won't test the children. We have differentiated learning in our district already. The gifted education part, I'm not too sure. And I don't really know how we would assess that. It can be IQ tests, it can be other ways. But I'm pretty happy with the way the district runs their curriculum, and the reading and writing, the math, I knew all about it before I moved here, and I'm happy with it. Do I think my children are gifted? Yes. Do I think they belong in gifted education classes? I'm not so sure.
Go right ahead.
First of all, part of the question was, what influence does the Board of Education have on this, on this issue? The Board is an advisory board. It's not an operating board. It's not our job to dictate the academic programs. The academic programs are dictated by the superintendent. We hired the superintendent two years ago. I believe strongly in the direction that the district is going in, in which it's going. I also believe strongly that the experts should be making this decision, not me. I, too, have three children who are all gifted, just in different ways. And I think this has been a long-going philosophy of the district. We've never been tracking. We never felt that tracking was the appropriate course of action for the district. We don't do very much of that. In fact, some of the things we're trying, we're trying to get away from that in terms of the AP classes, and make sure that everybody has the opportunity to take AP classes. Previously, we're not given that opportunity because of some sort of artificial flaw. So I happen to think, I agree with Callie. I think the district is in the right, is going in the right direction. And I think that as a board member, I support the administration making those sort of decisions.
So my position on this is, you know, as Jeffrey and Callie both said, that, yeah, our kids are all gifted. I wouldn't say my kids are gifted. I think they each have their own strengths. My one's a very good writer, my other's pretty good at math, my other's a musician. So I'm not sure how you would create a gifted and talented program for each of my three diverse children. One thing we do very well in Chappaqua is we believe, at least the administration and Board believe, in inclusion. We have inclusion classes. We believe that education is best learned when we have children of different abilities in the classroom. As Jeffrey said, the administration makes these decisions, but I totally agree with this, in agreement with it. If you look at any of the presentations that our students come to the Board of Education, we have students from kindergarten through high school come, and they work across all educational boundaries, right? We have children who aren't as advanced and children who are very advanced. And we learn from them at Board meetings that they learn from each other. Some of the advanced children learn from the children who struggle, and some of the struggling children learn from the students who are advanced. We offer a comprehensive education in Chappaqua, and, you know, we agree to faith, right? Fair and appropriate public education for everyone. We have AP classes, we have science research, we have, we built STEAM labs, we're looking at bio labs to enhance the education for everyone. So I think all, to have children of similar abilities segregated, I don't believe that creates a great educational environment.
Okay, so the question, as I heard, it was sort of two-part. It was first of all, gifted and talented, but also II, or twice exceptional, children, which means children who are both gifted and have disabilities. And this is actually a much more common presentation than I think many people are aware of. And I think that differentiated instruction is the answer. I think that gifted and talented programs don't have to be in a separate location. They don't have to involve pulling out of, children out of a classroom. But it's always important to remember when talking about work for children who are performing an exceptional level in any subject, whether they excel in one subject or more than one, is that differentiated instruction does not mean more work. It doesn't mean you finish the first worksheet and you get three more that look exactly like it. It means that you're given work that's on an appropriate level for that child, which for a child who's accelerated, may be a higher level. That said, it brings me to my second part of my answer, which is especially when we do get to the higher level, high school level, and there is some tracking involved, we need to make sure that children aren't tracked because of their disabilities, because children with disabilities should still be in accelerated and AP-level classes. And with appropriate differentiation, there's no reason that a child with a disability shouldn't be attending any accelerated or AP class offered. So I think that on both the elementary and the high school level, really making sure that we're meeting all of our learners where they are and giving appropriate level of work is the answer.
That brings us to the next part of the, I should have said at the beginning that our plan is to close the program at 8:30 at the latest. We'll see how many questions there are. So now, the responsibility falls to you as members of the audience. In some venues, we ask that the people write questions out and hand them in. Here, you are invited to come up, state your name and your question.
Turn of advance.
It's nice, man. My name is Rob Grayson, the Town Supervisor of Newcastle. And in my role as Town Supervisor, we do work together with the Town and Newcastle Police Department. In 2018, there were 45 school shootings. So far, in 2019, there have been 15 school shootings. That's once every 12 days. I believe maybe five or six years ago, the thought of, and I have a question, just bear with me, I'm sorry.
You're getting to it.
Thank you. I believe four or five, six years ago, the thought of having an armed police officer in the school would offend people. I think nowadays, the thought of not having an armed police officer in school would offend people. We've had an armed officer in the schools since May of 2018, and my question to you guys is that do you support continuing having an armed Newcastle police officer in the schools going forward in any shape or form, whether it be a school resource officer or just a Newcastle police officer? Thank you.
Well, that certainly is a current topic. Thank you. And Ms. Wong, we'll begin with you.
Thank you. So safety. Safety is probably, I can guarantee, almost
And my question to you guys is that do you support continuing having armed Newcastle police officer in the schools going forward? In any shape or form, whether it be a school resource officer or just a Newcastle police officer? Thank you.
That certainly is a current topic. Thank you. And Ms. Warren, we'll begin with you.
Thank you. So safety, safety is probably, I can guarantee, almost everyone's top priority. For our children, for ourselves, um, not just in the schools, but when you're walking around in town, um, when you're in the supermarket. And as for having an armed officer or an SRO in the buildings, I think that's something that we have to sit down and evaluate again and to think about what is happening now. Some things have worked, some things haven't worked. And we have to continue to reassess what our resources are and how can we implement better? And how can we make it safer? We want them to be safe. I want my children to be safe. I want to feel safe. It's an important topic.
Uh, to give you the one word answer, Rob, yes. We do support having, uh, a, uh, an armed presence at the schools. The long winded answer is it's not that easy. It's not that, it's a lot more complicated, there's a lot of issues. And, and as Rob pointed out, he thinks, um, we've changed our opinions. What we plan on doing, and I'm a member of the, uh, Long Term Security Task Force, of which, uh, Officer Detective Carroll is a part of it, the Newcastle Police Department. And Jane is here, she's also part of it. The, uh, we are gonna be administering a survey to the district, um, to, uh, in June, to asking the three groups, uh, this very question, how they feel about that. When we last asked this question about a year ago, um, we got a pretty mixed answer. It was fifty-fifty pretty much. I mean, it was a, it was a less scientific survey. This time we're gonna do a scientific survey. But there's other issues, um, including who pays for it, um, uh, including, you know, the president, where is this officer? Right now, Michelle, who does, does a terrific job, um, outside these schools and we're very happy with her presence there.
So, um, regarding safety resource officer or a patrol officer, as a district, we've never had armed presence in our schools for, uh, extended period of time. We've had it for when we need it, but not for extended period of time. Since Rob mentioned this, we have had armed presence since last year. And the town of Newcastle did a great job. They provided this at no cost to the district, um, for this year because we were concerned. And we are doing, as Jeffrey said, we are doing surveys. We're, we're looking into what we have to do to make this better. An officer, we had Michelle here this, this year and it was great. She engaged with the students. We need to understand who's assigned, who the resource officer will be. Yeah, that was a quick minute.
Sorry.
It's okay. Who's assigned? Financially, it's not so much the money, you know? We, we make do with money where we need to make do with money, especially for the safety of our kids. But there are a lot of administration, administrative questions. Who does a person report to? Where do they work? What, what's, they report to the district or they report to the police department? Surveys, we talked about, there's a difference between an SRO and a police officer. We understand that. We know we're coming from flexibility and funding is something we can work on. The big thing I see as an SRO is, uh, there should be, um, an educator, they should be an informal counselor, and they, they should provide law enforcement. Science app, we need to provide social and, uh, social and, uh, emotional health. But thank you. Answer your question, Rob, yes.
Thank you.
So my one word answer is also yes. I wish we didn't live in a world where we were even asking, let alone answering this question, but here we are. And I think that it's not only a good idea, but imperative that we have, unfortunately, an arms guard, at least at Greeley. I think that doing so in the form of an SRO is the right way to go. I know that there have been some community concerns around what role would this person have in terms of discipline? What would they report? People are concerned that children would be turned in for low level offenses that otherwise would be handled by administrators. In my mind, these are not concerns that, that undermine the need for having an SRO. I think they're all concerns that can be contracted around, if you will, in defining the terms of this position and how it would operate. But when you read the news stories coming out of Colorado that the student who committed this atrocity had told somebody, oh, you know, I thought I might wanna shoot some friends. This is why you need an SRO in a high school, especially a high school that's an open campus. And I think it's great that Greeley's an open campus. I went to a high school that's an open campus. I think it's an important sort of transition point, if you will, for our students as they move from high school and ultimately to college. But with, you know, with that freedom comes a level of risk. And I think that it's the job of the school board to mitigate that risk. And I would hate for us to dally and be in a position of would have, could have, should have.
My one word answer is no. I did a little research about this because your question popped up on Facebook a week or two ago. And what I can find is that SROs don't make schools safer. In Parkland, your SRO took a defensive position outside the school building and waited for backup. That's not gonna help. All right? I'm concerned about having armed police in our schools, about them criminalizing typical age appropriate behaviors. So for interactions that your kids might have at school, where you might get a phone call from the school saying, we need to talk about your child's behavior, now you're getting a phone call from the police department saying, we arrested your child today for assault, for interfering, for resisting arrest, whatever it might be. It changes the dynamic of the school. The data shows that schools are safer now than they were thirty years ago, quite a bit safer. School shootings were four times higher thirty years ago than they are today. The data also shows, um, that there are nineteen shootings per day involving children outside of schools. Unfortunately, there are still about five school shootings each month, but there are nineteen per day outside of school. And the most dangerous thing you can do with a child on any given day is to put them in a car and drive somewhere.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. I'm looking to you for, I mean, I, I've got a file here, but I, I don't think I'm gonna need it.
Mine's a little more spur of the moment, sorry. I think we all recognize, oh, sorry, Don Greenberg. I think we all recognize we live in quite a non-diverse community. And it just recently occurred to me that we haven't, our diverse teaching staff is almost nonexistent. So does that trouble you and what would you do to address that?
Okay, so diversity among the faculty?
Yes.
That's a question and we'll begin there.
Honestly, I never looked at the diversity of our faculty. I always look at, are we hiring the best people for the job? Presumably, if we are, um, it should be statistically, um, diverse. So I, I support hiring the best person for the job regardless of any category they fit into. That's all.
Okay.
Diversity is a big thing, right? There are plenty of ways of having a diverse society, a diverse district. I agree with what Jeffrey said. We hire the best people that we can. We put out, um, applications in OLS, people get reference to us, they go through a very rigorous process. We want the best educators in our district regardless of diversity or regardless of who they are. You know, if, if, if they are diverse, it's great. If they're not diverse, and what, what, I guess, what defines diversity? You know, you could look at someone and think one thing, they might be something else. You know, they might be, uh, their pronouns might be he, she, or they, but we don't know that and we're not gonna ask that during an interview. We do have, we, we do have diversity in some of our classes. Like we have, um, Chinese teachers who teach Chinese and we have Spanish teachers who speak, who speech Spanish. So there is some diversity. I'm not sure what kind of diversity you're looking forward, looking at. I agree, it's great to have a diverse society and maybe we could do that. But again, our, our job as an administration, administrators and then as a board is ensure that the children of Chappaqua get the best education possible.
I think the, um, the only concrete thing we can do is make it clear whenever any job is posted that we are a community that would welcome diverse applicants. And then through the screening process, pick the best candidate for the job. You know, I think that as districts have different reputations, you probably attract different candidates. And I hope that this is a community that has a reputation as being welcoming and inclusive and that that will attract a diverse array of candidates who wanna be part of our faculty.
I think it's a great question. It would be really nice to see, um, a broader selection of the population in our schools and setting examples and being role models for our children. The school board can certainly encourage a more diverse, uh, group of applicants. Ultimately, hiring decisions are up to building administrators. So making that a priority to them and communicating that value to them is probably the best next step.
Thank you, Don, for that question. So diversity is something that is personal to me. And you might think, oh, it's because I look different from some of the people that are sitting up here. And that is part of it, but it's also socioeconomic status. It's also who we're married to. I'm married to Korean. I'm Chinese and Korean. My husband grew up in Pakistan, but he's a hundred percent Korean. Diversity of faculty is necessary and diversity, not just in faculty, but also staff is necessary. Do I have the power to do that, to hire the people that I want because of what they look like? No. Do I have the power to hire somebody because of, um, how they perform? No, I don't have that power. The superintendent does. I can advise and I can advocate for diversity. I would love that. I was a teacher in Great Neck and I was yelled at when I was in the faculty bathroom because, um, a staff came in and said, why are you in here? Because I was the only Asian faculty member there and I must have also looked like I was fifteen.
Still look like you're twenty now.
Thank you. So yes, for diversity everywhere.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
There we go, there we go. Okay, be brave, be brave. Just state your name and your question.
Lori Morton. So a few years ago, the residents approved a forty-two million dollar bond for global learning spaces throughout the district. My understanding is that a lot of those projects are complete or nearing completion. And I think there have some, some shifts in the philosophy of learning in the district, but perhaps not so much in the content. And so I just wanted to hear your thoughts on what are the measurable goals, uh, for really making the most of these new spaces?
Is it me? Okay, great. Thank you for the question, Lori. Regarding the bond, from a facility's point of view, we're, we have a train, we had a transition contractor that, around January. So we're a little farther behind where we wanted to be from, from a facility's point of view. So we fell behind, but we're caught, we're catching up. We have a new contractor. Financially, we're on budget to complete all our projects that we, what we designed with the bond on time, um, on or below budget. Projects we completed, GLC, guided learning centers, the elementary schools, two turf fields. The turf, the field out here across the street here, it's not gonna be done until around, uh, twenty twenty. We knew that because it takes a little time to grow grass and then to put turf down. High school library, steam center, the L building, library, they're, at high school, they're all moving along. Regarding your question regarding how we do this, when we started the I-Lab, that was like a testbed to what we wanted to do with these open spaces and, and project-based learning. The I-Lab was developed with, um, the Chappaqua School Foundation who did a grant with this. However, before teachers would be able to go to the I-Lab and use it, we encouraged them and we, we required for them to have certain professional development and show us how they're gonna use those open spaces. We're doing the same thing with the, with the additional open spaces that are coming online in the, in the high school. So basically to answer your question, these are not just new spaces for the idea of new spaces. We're gonna continue using professional development, which we think is very important for our staff, across all our staff, to ensure that they use the spaces effectively and teach our children effectively.
So I got to, uh, see some of the, the use of the, uh, the new spaces particularly at Greeley, which I was not as familiar with, uh, at the Board of Ed meeting last week where some of the students presented their, um, their work that they'd been using some of these new spaces for. And I thought it was pretty incredible. The AP history class came and showed us their, uh, model Congress based on the, the Free Silver Movement, which reminded me of my AP Euro class many years ago where we put Napoleon on trial for war crimes. And so it was, it was really cool to see how they were using these new spaces available to them and really making, um, a concerted effort to bring learning to life. And I think that that is, you know, to, to the question of how would this be a continued goal going forward? And how would we use these spaces to achieve learning goals going forward? I think that these project-based learning initiatives are really amazing. And I think that it's a way, you know, there's been a lot of talk already here tonight, by myself included, about, um, differentiated instruction and including all learners. And I think that these project-based learning approaches to teaching are a really incredible way to do that because you can meet all students where they are. And many of these, uh, new learning spaces, especially the ones that also have a tech component, really allow students to access curriculum in many different ways and come together and all be part of the same project while working on it in a way that's appropriate to their level and to their abilities. And I think that's really cool.
Great. I'd like to speak to your, um, your question of measurable goals. That's a hard thing to conceptualize, a measurable goal for a, um, wide open creative learning space. But what I envisioned when, um, the bond was proposed was really an opportunity to gather, um, a bunch of kids together to do a multidisciplinary learning. Not a one-off or a once a quarter for a day or a couple of days, but a really in-depth, multidisciplinary project that would last an entire quarter that involves your, your social studies, your English and your math. And for me, a measurable goal would be to see the curriculums, um, specifically in the elementary and the middle schools, adapt to make that a regular part of what they do. That it is a long-term project that incorporates all the different disciplines while also giving the kids the freedom to work at their own pace and at their own level and, um, to also, you know, I guess, I'd love to see it across classrooms too. That there's a synergy that you get from cooperative learning or collaborative learning where there's a lot of feedback and input from others. It gives the students a, an ownership of their learning. Let's go now.
So as you know, there's been lots of changes in administration in our district recently. And, um, I was advised by my secret mentor to speak to some of the administrators before coming out tonight. And I had the pleasure of being able to talk to our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, Dr. Pease. And he is very, very smart. He has a well-thought-out plan about how we will use the new spaces that are being created, that have been created. And I encourage everybody to, um, reach out to our administrators, our leaders, um, to get more specific answers about that. Lori, you can contact Dr. Pease. He can explain to you much better than I can. The I-Lab, the open spaces, what Jeff, uh, what Warren said about professional development, it is happening. We actually have a lot of professional development in our district and it's important. I was a staff developer for the reading and writing project. And it's important. And the teachers are being trained to teach in different ways, in different spaces.
I saw that as a couple of part questions. To answer the first part about the bond, um, what we've completed, Warren gave a pretty quick synopsis, but if you look at page three of the, of the, uh, of the, what's happening in our district, uh, budget version of it, um, lists specifically the timeframe for everything being, uh, finished. Um, also in that, in that, uh, uh, this is a really inclusive, uh, newsletter. We talk about, um, our strategic coherence plan. Item number one on that plan, um, item priority number one on that plan is using instructional space to amplify learning. I would reiterate, uh, what Callie said, um, the administrative team, uh, which is a new team, has been really, um, aggressive in, in designing the curriculum to fit the space. And, and so Dr. Pease-
And so Dr. Pease, Dr. Ackerman, Dr. Simeas, and actually even John Chow, Finance Superintendent, have all been working on that. But our goal, number one priority according to strategic coherence plan, is to develop the space, is to develop the learning with the space. I agree with Leah about having a multidisciplinary classes and collaborative working. As Hillary said at the previous board meeting, but at all board meetings before that, we've been having student presentations and they've been demonstrating to us some of the collaborative PBL-type learning. So I think we're on the right path. I think that trying to measure that is a very difficult thing to do.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Weinberg. I lived in Greenberg for about 20 years, and I thought one of the great programs down there was in the Orsley High School. They had a community requirement to graduate. They had to work, kids have to work 20 or 30 hours in a campaign or in a public community organization or with a public official. How would you guys feel about starting something like that? Because I think there's a lack of connection between high school kids today and the community and how things work and how government works.
Okay. I agree with you that there needs to be an uptick in civics education, for sure. I mean, candidly, the number of people I've spoken to who didn't know we had a school board was sort of shocking. But the, I'm not sure that adding another requirement is necessarily the way to do it. I think it's certainly something worth exploring. I know that community service requirements have also been proposed in the past, and there's often a lot of pushback, because as we all know, if there's one thing our kids don't need, it's something else that takes hours. I think that there is a lot of value in what you're proposing, and I think it could be something that would be very encouraged as part of a senior project, so that to maybe encourage students to pursue a sort of civics-based or community-based project as part of that, or if there's a way to incorporate maybe as sort of a project-based learning component in, you know, a government class. I know New York State has a sort of civics or government or whatever they are calling it these days requirement to graduate. And to, I think it would be a really interesting idea to incorporate some real-world experience into that requirement. But I'm not sure how I feel about adding another 30-hour requirement on top of our already fairly taxed, from what I hear, high school students.
Am I allowed to ask questions back?
To clarify, to clarify the question.
Can you tell me if your proposal is specifically targeted to civics and government education or just a community service or community involvement?
The one in Orsley, which I thought was great, is more geared to civics and government.
How did they support that in the community to have enough opportunities for all the kids to participate effectively? I mean, I can see kids, you know, like handing out flyers at the train station, but I'm not sure that's a really valuable experience for them.
Well, we used to get a lot of kids in both of the Democrat and the Republican campaigns. They would volunteer for the campaigns and work on the campaigns, and others would do other work.
Well, it's an interesting idea that I'd want to know more about. Okay, I'm answering. I'm sorry.
You got it. Go ahead.
This includes, I'm okay giving up some of my 90 seconds, so I understand. I guess I would want to learn more about it and understand exactly what the students were learning through the program and whether or not the opportunities provided to them were teaching the kind of skills that we have in mind as a community. Are they just handing out flyers? Are they, you know, answering phones or making phone calls could be valuable. But I've never worked on a campaign before, other than my own, so I'm not really sure what's all involved. So I think I need more information to really make a decision about whether or not I think that would be valuable.
I think this is a great place for, where the Board of Education and the community can work together. There's lots of different organizations and places where students can volunteer and learn about civic and government. The people that host this event tonight, League of Women Voters is a place. The library, I belong to the Chappaqua Garden Club, and they do things around town that people don't know about, but it's being done. There are lots of opportunities. I think educating the students to take part in those things that already exist is important. Educating the parents and allowing their children to take part in those things is important. I think some people just don't know, but there are opportunities. We have a student here that is volunteering tonight.
It's interesting, because the audience, the live audience here, almost by definition is into civic engagement. They're all here, and you came out on a terribly cold and rainy night to hear local people who were trying to volunteer, which is another odd thing. You have to get elected to volunteer in the community. But we're out here, all five of us are out here trying to show that we want to be involved in the community. I support in concept. I think having civic engagement is, to me, critical. It's one of the reasons I ran for the Board of Ed. I believe that going back 12 years, I said it on campus, reading my old speeches, I said it in my first speech, was that I think that everybody in the community should volunteer in some way with the community where their skill set and the need fits. And that's one of the reasons why I thought I volunteered to run for the Board of Ed, because, I mean, I think my skill set fits, and certainly at the time, there was a need, there were no incumbents, and we needed it. So I think it's a great idea. We do have the senior experience, as Hillary pointed out, and I think that's something that could be worked in there. I mean, I also kind of agree. I'm not sure if there's enough opportunity. We have approximately 325 students per grade to find enough opportunity. Greenberg's a much bigger town. I don't know that it has to be in the town of Newcastle if they're volunteering, but certainly we'd be stretched to do it. I know that the Board of Ed at one point considered having a student representative to the Board of Ed, and that the person who did it went off to, who was advocating for it, went off to college and sort of died under the vote.
Okay, so I think it's a great idea, but our kids are already involved in many things, athletics, academics, arts, and some are individually involved in civics. Like, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Sarah.
Sarah. And Brandon, right behind her, was doing your job a couple of years ago, when I ran for the Board twice. So we do have, you're still coming back here, which is great, but we do have students who are involved in certain civic activities. You know, as Kaylee said, you know, legal women voters is a great way to get involved. I know some students from our classes, junior and senior classes, spend time up in Albany. There are little internships up there. So I think if students feel that's where they want to go, that's a great thing. To force it on them, I'm not sure. I know they learn a lot in civics classes and social studies classes, and that's where they get educated on how they can learn about volunteering in our society. As Jeff said, he ran for school board. I got involved, I guess, in civics and with the community later in life, a lot later than Brandon and Sarah here. But it's a great idea, I think, as long as we make it available to the students in the district and they feel that they got the support from our teachers and educators. It's good, and their parents.
I'm wondering, was, is that the project that was called WISE? It's an acronym.
No, it's something different.
That's different? Okay. You're familiar with that? Okay. Which began in Greenberg. Okay.
Also a very good program.
It is. That one I know. All right. Another question.
Turn it, just, you can.
Hi, my name is Kyle Beth Hilfer. I have four kids who have graduated from Greeley, and we're all done with the school system. So my head's in a kind of different place. I used to be very concerned about a lot of the issues that have come up tonight, but I'd like to go back to where we started with Rob's question. So safety resource officer, we can debate that. But story after story, what strikes me is kids who have fallen through the cracks and that a whole system has failed these kids with tragic consequences. I would, I don't exactly know what the board's role is in this, but I would like to know generally what is being done in the district to identify kids who may become a risk of danger to themselves or to others.
What's being done and what might be done?
Yes.
All right. Beth, begins with you.
Oh, okay. You know, each school has a school psychologist. They're pretty on the ball. I think usually you get some teacher or even parental referrals regarding children who may be at risk. But I think we ought to back it up a little bit further and consider the kids who might even be 2E, the twice exceptional, the gifted but have a learning disability or a challenge. A lot of those kids do exactly what you're saying. They fall through the cracks. There's not supports there for them. They're not being provided for the way they need to be. And I think as a district, we need to refocus our efforts, not just on, you know, special ed or advanced academics in high school. But again, I've been saying this all night, we got to back it up all the way to elementary school. Those kids that are acting out, the kids who are struggling, we need to figure out what they need and start supporting them effectively. That's where it starts. You build up that frustration all through elementary school and middle school, by the time they get to high school, you know, we all know what it's like to be stressed out and have anxiety. Imagine having a little kid who feels that way but doesn't have the life experience to really know how to handle it. All right, so I'm on board with this. We need to find those kids and we need to start supporting them.
When I get angry, it's because I don't feel heard. It's because I feel like I've said many things many times, whether it's to my children, to my husband, or to friends. I feel angry, or I feel alone in what I believe is right. I think what we need for all of our children, not the children who we become suspicious of, is time. We need to give them attention, we need to give them time, and we need to be patient, and we need to be able to listen. That's what I do for my children, and that's what I want for myself. Because when anger stirs up inside your heart, nothing can stop it. SRO, armed police officer, barricades, nothing. And I think we need to address the issue at heart from the root, not just put hardware pieces into buildings. Not to say that it's not necessary. We need to address the heart matters, the heart issues, because it's anger, it's feeling alone, it's feeling segregated, it's feeling bullied, and it all comes from anger and not being heard and not feel like they're given attention to.
I want to thank Kelly for that answer. I think it's a terrific answer, and I think we should all think about that. The board is involved, obviously, in oversight of security. To me, I've been a member of the short-term security force, task force, and the long-term one I am currently serving. And the board's focus on that thing, Jane's here and I'm here, and Lauren, as board president, has been, I think the number one issue with security is not reacting to it with an SRO, but it's prevention. It's getting there first. It's identifying the people, the students who may be at risk of not being heard or who are not being heard. It's about social-emotional learning. We have started a Ruler program from Yale. We follow it, it goes to all grades, K through 12, and it's on different implementations at this point in different board, different building levels. We have a safer, smarter schools in the elementary students. But to me, the critical component of safety and security is prevention, not reacting to it. Obviously, we have to react if something happens. So I think that focusing on every child in every grade and their social-emotional learning is critical. And I happen to agree with the premise of the question, that is the very critical part. My three children have all graduated, and I can tell you that there were different times and different points in their careers here in Chappaqua where I don't think they were heard. And I will stop.
Okay. I think the question was about safety, I think it was also about falling through the cracks. I know that there are a lot of parents involved in schools when they come in, especially special ed, they'll see kids by themselves in the hallways, and they feel like maybe they're not being heard or being seen, and they don't have friends. And they do, we do have programs in place where they'll go to those, and they try and match them up with other children, may have similar activities. As Jeff mentioned, this Ruler program, I was able to listen to Dr. Mark Brackett from Yale, who, twice, once last year at the West Putt Dinner, and then again at the opening of school this year. And his idea with this program is, we can teach academics or arts or athletics, I always call them the three As instead of the three Rs. But social-emotional health is as important to our learning and the students in our school than anything else that helps you learn better. We do have a lot of professional development. When Mark Brackett was there, he spoke to the entire faculty, and then they had breakout sessions. So we're teaching the faculty, the staff, how to notice and how to be involved and see that, so we can maybe stop kids who, and help kids who are starting to fall through the cracks. So I think the district is working hard at this already. I can stop.
I think that the answer in many ways lies with communication, that we need to make sure that there are open lines of communication, not only for students to be comfortable reporting, whether in person or anonymously, to teachers and administrators if they notice that a student may be struggling, that a fellow student may need help in some arena, but also, and this is where what Warren spoke to with the professional development is so important, that everybody working in our schools is trained in recognizing this, and not only in the way that your question pointed to initially, which is students who might potentially, you know, inflict harm on their peers, but also on students who may harm themselves, which is unfortunately a very major problem amongst teenagers, not only here, but across all communities, especially high-performing communities, unfortunately. And I think that in terms of students falling through the cracks, it happens not only in terms of students who we are worried might be a danger to others, but students who really just need support in many arenas. And I think that in the last couple of years, the district has gotten better in terms of keeping lines of communication open, in making anonymous reporting an option in terms of if something's going on that shouldn't be going on. And I hope that through the continued professional development, all of our faculty and staff who are working with students know the appropriate lines of communication.
Okay, thank you. You know, I'm looking at the clock. I think we can take two more, probably two more questions, go right ahead, before we go to closing statements.
Hi, Roger Klepper, 17-year resident of the district. One thing in my time here I've noticed among the children in the district is they all have a tremendous, you know, breadth of opinions that they are more than happy to share with whoever will ask them. And we've seen that, we've seen it at board meetings many, many times. And, you know, with that in mind, I've mentioned, I mentioned a very long time ago, and it's come up periodically over time. I think I mentioned it, I remember specifically Randy, when he was on the board, mentioning to him, he thought this was a great idea, the idea of doing a survey for exiting seniors. And this is something that's come up at board meetings over time. It's been suggested periodically. And, you know, and, you know, and I see these opinions that they all have. And I also think about, call it, say, you know, Title IX issues that we've.
Your question.
Okay, Title IX issues that we've had, and school safety, and also the $42 million bond and investment. And we sort of get a self-selected opinion of students and parents. We don't get a broad set of opinion, you know, how are we serving everyone? So my question is, what do you think of a survey? Why, for the existing board members, why don't we have one? And what are some of the challenges that you might envision in implementing something like that on a periodic basis and collecting all of this information over time?
Okay.
Sorry about the long question.
Yeah.
Thank you. Surveys are good. Lots of retailers give out surveys and ask for you to fill out surveys and you get a discount for your next purchase. Sometimes that drives me to fill one out, sometimes it doesn't. The only challenging part of having surveys is that it's not mandatory, right? So people who want to voice their opinions will take the survey, and people who are not in the loop or don't know about it, for whatever the reasons, will not be voiced and they won't be heard. So that's the challenging part. What's in place, I'm not sure, but I'm sure my incumbents can answer that for us.
I don't know what I can answer. The question you had for the current board members, why don't we have a survey? I actually, I don't have an answer to that. I don't know why we don't have the survey, although I think we did do a one survey one time. But we definitely do not regularly survey graduating seniors. But what we are doing, and it's really as part of the long-term security task force, and it goes back to a lot of previous questions, we are surveying Greeley students right now. We're gonna be doing it in June to survey the current students about, I've got four-page list of questions we plan on considering to ask them, including mental health-type questions, feeling connected-type questions, what you, you know, what you think was good about the district and what not, et cetera. So I, you know, I think surveying is a great thing. I think that, as Kelly pointed out, you want to make sure that the survey is scientifically relevant or statistically relevant by getting a broad selection, statistically-relevant selection of people to take the survey. If anything else, asking a high school senior, especially after he's walked down the aisle and shaken his hand to do something, I can tell you with my three Right, it's unlikely to happen. But I think we should, I don't think it's, I don't think we shouldn't try. And I do think we'd probably be better off surveying current students and then seeing the responses from, let's say, ninth grade to where they are in 12th grade. See if we, either we've grown as a district or they've changed about what they're looking for. So, thank you, Roger. Sure, survey them all.
So Roger, we have done surveys in the past. I think part of the reason, I agree with you, I can go to the principal tomorrow and suggest this to him, that's not a problem, or to the superintendent of schools. Part of the thing is, can you get follow-up afterwards? You know, as Jeffrey said, when they walk down the aisle to get their diploma, that's the end of it. I'm not as cynical, I don't think, I think the kids would do that. Especially if it's before graduation, when they're lining up, you can just give them a quick survey to take. It's a no-penalty environment, right? They, at that point, they don't dare. They're gonna give you their honest opinion. You said earlier, the kids come to the school board meetings? Absolutely, we love them when the students come. Again, as Jeffrey said earlier, all year long, we've been having students of different grades come. And, you know, sorry to the adults in the room, but most of the time, the kids are more articulate. They're passionate about what they want and what they're doing, about their learning. So we enjoy getting feedback from the students. Great idea. I think, again, we've done in the past, I think the big question would be, how do you implement a survey? And how do you maybe get feedback later on? There's no reason we can't try it again.
So as a professor, I'm evaluated at the end of every semester essentially by survey. And what I've learned is that you get two-word answers out of most people who are moderately happy with the class, or, you know, don't have any complaints. And then you get basically war and peace from anybody who was either thrilled or absolutely hated you. And in the, I think, thirteen years I've been teaching now, I've gotten a little bit of all of that. So I think that there is, I'm not concerned about getting students to fill it out, per se, so much as only getting useful answers from both ends of the spectrum. The other thing about surveys, and I think it's a good idea, as long as it's implemented correctly, is you shouldn't just collect data for the sake of collecting data. And that's something that I see a lot with schools, because we're very data-driven recently, which is a good thing if you're going to use the data. But to collect data for the sake of having data just gives you a pile of data. So I think that in designing a survey and implementing it, you need to be sure that you're asking questions, that when you get the answers, you can actually do something with them. And that you're willing to do whatever that thing is that you can do with those answers. So I think that, whereas it's a really good idea and something that I would absolutely be behind, I think that that's also the challenge with it, is that if you give a survey and then you don't do anything with the answers or the data that you collect, then you've just made people angry that you've given them a survey and done nothing with it.
I'm gonna ask a question. What sort of things would you want to survey the seniors for?
Well, I mean, I think, I mean, there's two things. Certain, like, safety types of things.
Okay.
Title IX types of things.
Okay.
It's probably the best window for, you know, if you see something, say something.
So you're not suggesting that we survey for, this can be part of my ninety seconds, I'm content with that, is that okay?
That's okay.
Okay.
But also curriculum and how it met their curriculum.
But we're not necessarily surveying teachers or performance, or are we?
And no, I think it would, any teachers that they wanted to highlight, because it is a window for them to say something in where they might be hesitant.
So, it's not your turn to ask questions. Oh, I thought, I thought somebody Sorry.
Take it back.
I take it back. I think back to my own senior year of high school, and I know that there was so much going on that depending on the day that you caught me for a survey, I could have wildly different answers from another day. And I wonder if it might be more valuable to try and survey, maybe even a year later, or a couple of years later, after they've had some time to reflect on their experience and see how it's actually affected their path through college or later. Surveys aren't really my thing. I mean, I don't know a lot about surveys. It sounds like there are a lot of people up here who do know a lot more about surveys than I do. It's an interesting idea. I, you know, I guess it would need further investigation.
We're gonna take a last, a last question here.
Hi, Christina Herman. Just asked a question. I'm one of the nearly 400 families in the district that signed a petition to find a solution for rising temperatures in our classrooms. To have a question, has a lead-up. With each decade, school days are getting hotter. In fact, NASA believes that temperatures will continue to rise and heat waves pose a growing challenge in the Northeast. National Weather Service has indicated a heat wave, a heat index of over ninety degrees requires extreme caution. Last September, the teaching staff recorded temperatures in our schools. Horace Greeley, ninety-one Fahrenheit. Roanoke, second floor was ninety-three, and seventy kids from the class reported nausea and headache. Bell's, fourth floor was ninety-four. Seven Bridges, the morning classroom temperature begins at eighty-four, then rises over ninety on the second floor. And West Orchard is, has an eighty-seven Fahrenheit average in the classrooms. So OSHA recommends that schools be kept at no hotter than seventy-six degrees Fahrenheit. School districts such as Scarsdale, Rye, Armonk, and even all New York City public schools in every borough are making the commitment to cool our schools. Summer begins June twenty-first, and our last day of school is June twenty-sixth. Understanding that the kids are not learning or testing well in these exceedingly hot temperatures, how would you support our children's health and wellness, ensure an optimal learning environment, and stay competitive to other school districts as part of the school board? Please indicate any temporary or permanent, long-term ideas of any.
Well, I think the timing of your question is excellent. I've been, as a member of the Facilities Committee, I've been working with several people who also signed, of the four hundred, also say, signed a survey. You know, certainly, working in an extreme heat environment is not a good thing, as OSHA points out. A couple of things I bring up. One, we have a great turnout here. We've never had this kind of turnout for a board meeting unless there's some sort of big issue. But on May twenty-ninth, our Facilities Committee, John Chow and Joe Gomando, will be presenting the district's heat alleviation plan to the Board of Ed and into the community simultaneously, since it's a live event. Couple of things we've already done as, on the Facilities Committee. We did some research on roofs, colors of roofs and surfaces. And we, in a, one of the particular areas hardest hit is Bell on the third floor. And we've implemented a new white roof, if you will. We did some, one of the other physical actions we've taken already is to air-condition some of the Greeley cafeteria. And lastly, we're working on plans for each district, for each building. But as we've done the, it turns out, as we've done the bond, most of the new spaces are air-conditioned. So we're working on plans to be able to either rotate students through or whatnot. The administration's gonna present that plan, and I have not seen it on May twenty-ninth. But I would note that if we were to air-conditioning, we did a quick survey. If we were to air-conditioning the entire district, it would cost in excess of $20 million. So that would require a bond and a vote by the, by you taxpayers.
So I get to put a name with a face, thank you. We've spoken a couple of times on the phone about this. So, again, Jeffrey said, the district is working on a heat alleviation plan to try and figure this out. At our last board meeting, unfortunately, it's next board meeting, not this past board meeting, they said they'd have a report for us, from the Facilities Committee, to the entire board and the community. We are, each building does have a cool-free zone, so we can rotate students through there. As Jeffrey also said, to console my thunder here, because I hear all this already, other people haven't. We're putting lighter-colored roofs on the buildings that will help with some of the heat. I checked, I did some quick research, and apparently, last spring, just did last spring, in May, there were three days over ninety degrees and four days over eighty-five. One of the issue, as Jeff said, it would cost about $20 million to air-condition all our buildings and all the, every zone in them. And that's not including flipping the switch on and watching the compressors run. So we would have to get, the community would have to understand that that's what they were signing up for. We can't just cancel schools, so we're looking at other ways to help around that. New York State implemented a new law last year, where it used to be a hundred and eighty days, now it's a hundred and eighty days and certain hours. If we cancel school after half a day, we lose those hours. So that could potentially hurt our state funding.
Thank you.
So I confess that I was squarely in the camp of, I sweated through the regions in a hundred-degree gyms, and I'm still here, and everybody will live, until I almost passed out at a PTA meeting at Grafflin in September. And that changed my mind. I also, you know, I work with a lot of kids over the years who are asthmatic. And being in buildings for kids who don't struggle with asthma at those temperatures is really hard. But certainly for kids with asthma or any other respiratory limitation, it's brutal, and it's unhealthy. I also live in an over-hundred-year-old house and am cognizant of what putting air conditioning into an old building looks like, because we're just sweating at home, it was too expensive. But I think that there does need to be a solution that doesn't just involve shifting kids in and out of one classroom and then the other, because it's lost learning time then. If we're going to have the school days, they should at least be learning. And, or taking tests, or whatever it is that they need to be doing in those spaces that day, and putting kids in an air-conditioned room for twenty minutes at a time does not really facilitate that. So I think that we do need to look into what it would cost to make all of the buildings livable, because global warming is here to stay, and this is where we're at, although you wouldn't know it this evening. And so I think that, whereas it would obviously be, as both men have indicated, quite expensive, I think it is something that we need to explore and then figure out how to fund.
All right, I'm not sure I have anything new to add. Everybody's spoken very eloquently about it already. It sounds like there's already investigations underway for various remediation. And there's an acknowledgement that adding air conditioning to the buildings is gonna be extremely expensive, and you're gonna have to have voter buy-in to pass a bond to approve.
The temperatures that you mentioned, that's pretty high. And I am concerned, my children always do complain that it is hot in the buildings, and I'm always cold. So in the morning, when I send them off, they are wearing a jacket, a sweater underneath, and then another button-down shirt underneath that. I said, you can always take off, but you can't put on if you don't have the garments with you. But my three boys love to wear shorts three hundred sixty-five days a year, so they're always hot, not just in school buildings. But it should definitely be addressed, and I would love to see that petition, because I haven't. Also, like Warren and Jeffrey mentioned, the district heat alleviation plan, we are investigating, and there are things that are being set up to help with that. I also do trust that the schools won't put, the district won't put my kids in danger, because it's too hot for them. So I do have that trust, whether they be in a room that has air conditioning for different periods of the day, or they're not making them run around when it's ninety degrees. I do trust that until we find a solution.
Okay, thank you to those of you who came up and asked questions. That was a good, a good question period, we come to closings. It took me a while to realize what you meant before, that you chose, you chose the numbers almost in alphabetical order for the math whizzes in the room. How many possible permutations are there?
Hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty, that's right. Hundred and twenty, okay.
Gifted and talented.
But seriously, we come to closing statements, one minute each, starting with the almost end of the alphabet.
Thank you. Thank you for taking time to listen to all of us this evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for holding this meet the candidates tonight, and thank you to my fellow candidates. As a member of the school board, I have done everything I can to ensure that we have a sound financial plan in place to run the district, work with the town, Newcastle and community, and advocate for all individuals of the school community, while maintaining the highest educational standards for our programs. Being a member of the school board has allowed me to learn how the district really works. The district needs experience and fiduciaries, financial custodians on the board to manage $126 million budget and to continue to manage the $42.5 million bond. We need knowledge and consistency, experience now, and institutional knowledge to go forward, especially at this time, to ensure that we maximize the use of millions of dollars in funds that we're receiving from the community. I know this will make certain, I know that this will make certain that Chappaqua Central School continues to be a top-tier and forward progressive-thinking district. My agenda is to be fiscally responsible, forthright with the community, and to ensure that we have excellence in education continued. I have enjoyed being a member of the school board. I am asking the community for the continued support and their vote on Tuesday, May twenty-first, 2019, to allow me to continue representing them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Last alphabet, free, first in your heart. Again, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, my fellow candidates in the community. The candidates were asked many questions tonight. Now I ask one thing of you. I ask that you take the time to go to the polls next week and vote. It goes without saying, I want you to vote for me, but as important, go vote on the budget. I continue to be passionate about education, our district, and the importance to our future. Weir's parents can offer no greater inheritance to our children than outstanding, well-rounded, and varied education. To the community, the strength of our schools is a direct function of our property values. Education's importance to our future is not simply to give our students a running start into the rest of our lives. The community needs to have the proper balance between fiscal austerity and maintaining our academic excellence in order to support the premise on which our community rests. I continue to be unwavering in my belief that the community we serve is the broader community of not just parents with children in schools, but residents without schoolchildren too. A challenge as a board member is to serve all of the community, not simply one part of it. I offer not just rhetoric, but actionable suggestions. I offer twelve years of direct experience and a deep knowledge of district programs and personnel. I offer leadership and a consensus-building skills. I offer common sense with an uncommon commitment. Experience matters, thank you.
Thank you.
You can be first on their hearts, I'm first on the ballot. Tonight, you came out, you tuned in, because this matters. Our children, their safety, the education, the budget, these are all that we care for. These are all that we value and want to protect. This is our responsibility. I cannot do this alone. I need you, the community, the village, help me. On May twenty-first, you have the choice, the freedom to voice your opinion, the freedom to exercise democracy. I ask you, for your support, please come out and vote for what matters to you. And first on the ballot, Huang.
I'm last on the ballot. A good friend described me as a person who is no-nonsense, questioning, probing, and not accepting of the status quo. This is completely accurate, and this is what I will bring to the school board. If you want someone who is thoughtful and makes decisions based on facts and data, please vote for me, Leah Heiss. vote for me, Leah Heiss.
Having a child in elementary school has really highlighted how much schools have changed since I graduated high school in 1996. Computer education for us encompassed moving the logo turtle and the horrors of learning you could only carry 40 pounds of meat back to the wagon before succumbing to diphtheria. Our kids are coding in elementary school, they're printing chairs in high school, and what this shows beyond these amazing skill sets is that we can't possibly predict what our students will need to know 20 years out. All we can do is give them the skill set they need to become inquisitive learners, and learners who are always willing to try harder to get to the next question. The other thing is that I feel that there is inherent value in change. Board terms are staggered to ensure both continuity and enabling new membership and new ideas. I believe that membership on boards such as this one should change over, and there should be new blood, and that it's important to have board membership that represents all stages of a child's educational journey, from elementary school through high school. And right now, it doesn't, and I think that that should change. Thank you.
And now is the time, I've got a few other words, but now is the time for Very good. Thank you. Thank you to the candidates and to the audience. I can do this. I could not, I know, I could not do that. Terrific, all of you. Reminder that this was on livestream, and it's going to be repeated on cable and FiOS until Election Day. I also just want to remind you of the unique and important role played by the League of Women Voters here and in communities all across the country. The League's work in registering voters, educating voters on the issues of the day, and protecting their right to vote is vital to the strength of the democracy. Your local league is made up of volunteers who devote their time and energy. Your participation and assistance would be welcomed, your financial contributions would be appreciated. Democracy is not a spectator sport. That's a League slogan. Encourage everybody to get out and vote next Tuesday. Correct? Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks again. Another round of applause. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.